Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April the 9th, 2018. If you would please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Ms. Hoppe. Apparently she's not here. Monica Duran.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum and I haven't heard from Ms. Hoppe, so maybe she's on her way.
Maybe she's been delayed in traffic. Councilors, you have received study session notes for March 19th, 2018. If there are no corrections, we will let these be presented as read. They'll be approved as presented in the notes. We have a number of proclamations today, so I'm going to roll to the podium. Is Margaret Padgett here? Are we all on this one? Margaret, come on up. I'm pleased to make a proclamation for Arbor Day and for the city of Wheat Ridge as Tree City USA. Whereas trees have always been regarded as an important asset to the citizens of our community of Wheat Ridge, providing one of the first business opportunities in the 1860s. And whereas trees continue to be respected as an important part of the quality of life to the citizens of the city of Wheat Ridge and visitors, enhancing property values and community spirit. And whereas our mature trees are suffering from the devastation of environmental stresses, including insect and disease, winter drought, and severe temperatures. And whereas the Sea of Wheat Ridge has been awarded Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare Saturday, April 20, 2018, as City of Wheat Ridge Arbor Day Celebration and encourage all citizens and businesses of Wheat Ridge to participate in this effort by planting a tree or a shrub. Margaret, present this to you. Can you get the right one?
This will be our 39th Tree City Award this year. And as part of that, we have the Colorado State Forest Service Representative Alan Gallimore here to say a few words about what a Tree City is.
Thank you, Mayor Barker, and the city council for the time on the agenda tonight to present Wheat Ridge with its 39th Tree City USA Award. This isn't an automatic renewal. You have to apply every year and show you meet the qualifications of having a tree board or a professional forester or tree manager hired by the community. You have to have a tree ordinance that's followed by the community. You have to have a community forestry program, which has an annual budget of $2 per capita, which is a considerable investment. And you have to have an Arbor Day observance and proclamation, which is what we're accomplishing tonight. It's good to see the support and investment in tree programs here in Wheat Ridge continuing, and it's being recognized by your award as Tree City USA. We have some materials for Margaret to use to display around the city here. I'm going to give those to her at this time. Keep up the good work, and we look forward to working with you all next year on your 40th award as well.
Okay, Sergeant Mark Mullenberg with the Wheat Ridge Police Department, is he here tonight? Would you join me at the podium?
Sure.
I'm reading a proclamation to designate the week of April 8th through 14th, 2018, as National Crime Victim Rights Week. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year affecting individuals and communities. And whereas reaching and serving all victims of crime is essential to supporting thriving communities because those who receive holistic services and support are more likely to remain invested in their communities. And whereas dedicated victim service providers are working every day to meet the needs of crime victims, yet there are still too many victims without meaningful access to rights and services. And whereas engaging a broader array of health care providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that improve their safety, healing, and access to justice. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge, in conjunction with Victims Outreach Incorporated, is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resistance in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through 14th, 2018, as Crime Victims Rights Week and affirm the city's commitment to creating a victim service and crime justice response that assists all victims of crime and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant service, support, justice, and peace. In witness thereof, I have affixed my signature. Thank you. Give this copy to you.
Say thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Are there a few words you want to say?
I have a few words.
Say a few words.
When I started in this business 28 years ago, the victims of crime frequently were overlooked, and that's -- there were a lot of reasons for that. It was focused on the offenders. VOI has always been there to help us with victims. They keep getting stronger every year, to the point that the state legislature passed the Victims Rights Act. And every year, the victims get more of a voice as to what happened and what they want to see occur in the criminal justice system. And we just keep working in that direction, and I hope for many years to come that this keeps going on like that.
I'm Dana Easter.
Hi Dana.
I am a Chief Deputy District Attorney from the county.
Look to the mic.
Thank you. I have been with the county since 1986, and I've known this commander almost all of those years. I really would like to thank you all for your continued support of VOI. We have a wonderful partnership between prosecutors and police, and the quality of police work all over our county goes up every year. The cases get more and more complicated. Our inclusion of the victims in this process has really helped. It helps them, it helps us, we know more about a case. And so I really appreciate you all recognizing VOI and helping us accomplish that. Thank you.
David, come on up. Or is he saying on TV, "Come on down"? Nice to see you. Thanks for joining us. I would like to start with another proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas good mental health is essential to the overall health and emotional well-being of all children, youth, adults, and families, and promotes a healthy community. And whereas increased focus on the prevention of mental health conditions and substance use disorders among children and adolescents through screening and early intervention helps improve lives. And whereas the stigma against mental health conditions and substance abuse disorders prevents many people from assessing care. And whereas the mental health problems and substance use disorders are detected early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and independent life. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge is dedicated to improving the health and well-being of its citizens by ending stigma and focusing on the integrated role of mental health in all our lives. Therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Awareness Month and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, providing appropriate and accessible service for all citizens, and making mental health a priority for our community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Goff. I'm the Chief Financial Officer and VP of Administration for Jefferson Center for Mental Health. On behalf of the Board, Staff, and Clients of Jefferson Center, thank you for issuing this proclamation and recognizing Jefferson Center for its 60 years of serving our community as a nonprofit, community-focused, mental health care and addictions treatment provider. Last year alone, we touched the lives of more than 32,000 people. You know, mental health issues affect us all. One in five people during their lifetime, right in our own communities, will experience a mental health or substance use problem. Jefferson Center has a staff of more than 700 people. We have 20 clinical offices, primary care practices, preschools, nursing homes, and other community locations, and we are also in more than 50 elementary, middle, and high schools. Jefferson Center is also part of the Colorado Crisis Services System, offering a 24-hour Sunday Week Walk-In Crisis and Mobile Crisis Teams. The Walk-In Center will be moving just up the road on April 14th to the Crisis Recovery Center at 4643 Wadsworth Boulevard in Wheat Ridge. We are here for that mother who is desperately searching for help, for her child who's talking about suicide. We are here when the person struggling with heroin addiction is finally ready to reach out for treatment. We respond when a community agency experiences a tragedy in the workplace and needs support for getting through the crisis. A very important part of our mission is to make sure our community is able to recognize and understand when someone is in crisis and knows where to turn for help. That's what our mental health first aid community trainings are all about. We have one every month, and they are free. We would love for you to take the training and join the working network of mental health first aiders in Jefferson County. There's more information in your folders, which I'll provide to you. In this challenging healthcare environment, we rely on the support of the community, on your support. We truly value the support of Wheat Ridge. Thank you again for recognizing this important milestone for Jefferson Center. We couldn't do all this important work without you. Thank you.
I'm not done yet, let's see. This one here. Okay, here's for the mental health awareness. Let's get a picture on that. Okay, David, hang on because we've got one more piece of business here to take care of. And I'm very proud and pleased that you're going to be working in our building on Wadsworth Boulevard to help our citizens there, and that won't be dark for too long, so thank you for being there. And I would like to now recognize Jefferson Center's 60th Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas Jefferson Center is celebrating 60 years of service in the communities of Jefferson, Clear Creek, and Gilpin Counties. And whereas Jefferson Center's mission is to inspire hope, improve lives, and strengthen community by providing mental health, substance abuse, and related solutions for individuals and families. And whereas Jefferson Center is a nonprofit, community-focused, mental health care and substance abuse service provider, they offer hope and support to individuals and families who are struggling with mental health issues and substance abuse disorders. And whereas Jefferson Center's staffs are experts in treating people with serious mental illnesses and substance abuse disorders and offer specialized programs for veterans, children's and families, victims of trauma, and seniors. And whereas Jefferson Center is a cornerstone in our community and collaborates closely with other nonprofits, community agencies, health care providers, the city of Wheat Ridge, and law enforcement to improve the lives of our citizens. And whereas Jefferson Center is an essential first responder in our community, providing critical support in the event of traumatic community disasters, and is an essential resource for healing individual and community trauma. Therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby recognize Jefferson Center's 60th Anniversary in the year of 2018 and recognize Jefferson Center for the significant impact the organization has made and continues to make to Wheat Ridge. Thank you. We are at the Citizens' Right to Speak portion of our agenda tonight. I have a list of the people who have signed up to speak, and our first speaker is Dorothy Archer. If you would come to the podium, adjust the mic, and give us your first and last name and spell your last name. Give us your address.
My name is Dorothy Archer. I reside at 3640 Marshall Street. Good evening, Mayor Starker, council, staff, and citizens. The last time I spoke, I think I drew your attention to the Neighborhoods and Housing booklet, page 51. I'd like to review that with you. The Neighborhoods and Housing goals and policies contained in this chapter aim at maintaining the appeal and character of the city's established neighborhoods. The future focus is maintaining that and quality and character. If you move on over to page 52 of that same booklet, Neighborhood Identity Programs. Coordinate with interested neighborhood groups to define appropriate boundaries and areas for neighborhood plans. Use neighborhood-level planning to determine appropriate character and design for distinct areas. And work with interested neighborhoods to develop guidelines, standards, and other tools to retain that character. If you move on over to page 53, the city will guide future infill development and redevelopment to keep with the overall character and vernacular of the surrounding neighborhood. If you would move on then over to page 93, the city will strive to make all aspects of city government transparent, engaging, and accessible for all community members. Move on, please, then, to page 106. Certain development regulations and zoning should be amended to achieve the development patterns or neighborhood protection. Again, we're not asking that some homes be scraped. We're asking to eliminate and do away with the 35 feet. One more time, every surrounding city has eliminated the 35 feet. It is not in keeping, it is not sustainable. At this point, we're asking again, 25 feet. If you want to retain the 15-foot bulk plane, you're looking at another half a story. More than adequate. Three-quarters of old Wheat Ridge or East Wheat Ridge is Zone 2. You bring in those 35-foot houses, and you have eliminated the sustainability and the transparency and the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Is there any other members of the public here in our chamber that would like to speak? This is an opportunity to come forward if you'd like to do that. Okay, I don't see any more speakers coming forward, so we'll close our public comment and move on to our...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may respond?
You may.
I would just like to thank Dorothy Archer. Whether you agree with her or disagree with her, I think this is the essence of our public citizen's right to speak. She's got a program. She researches the information that she brings to us and does an excellent job of presenting it. Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that council would like to make at this time? Okay, the agenda will remain as present. Mr. Matthews, before you introduce consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that the councilors would like to pull off the consent agenda before we move on those? Mr. Matthews?
I would like to have some limited discussion on Agenda Item Number 1A, the overlay program.
Okay, then we will lay that to the side and proceed with the consent agenda items 1, B, C, and D at this time. Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number 1?
Congent item number 1 is a motion to award ITB-18-03 2018 Concrete Rehabilitation and ADA Improvements, Project Base Bid and Bid Alternatives 1 and 2 to the Perfect Patch Asphalt Company, Commerce City, Colorado, in the amount of $403,652.20, with a contingency amount of $20. Would you like me to read the other remaining two, please?
Yes, that was Item 1B. Please do one.
Item 1C, Resolution 20-2018, Amending the 2018 General Fund Budget in the amount of $2,216 for the purpose of appropriating grant awards for the installation of two bike repair stations along Clear Creek Trail. And Item Number 1D, Motion to Approve Payment to Kaiser Permanente for April 2018 Membership Billing in the Amount of $198,233.22.
Is there a second for Agenda Items 1, B, C, and D?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Matthews, a second by Mr. Urban. Will the clerk please poll the council on 1, B, C, and D?
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce council item 1A?
Thank you. Item 1A, Motion to Award ITB-18-05 2018 Overlay Project Base Bid and Bid Alternate 1 to Martin Marietta Materials, Westminster, Colorado, in the amount of $1,374,432.20, with a contingency amount of $68,720.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fitzgerald. We'll take discussion on the motion. Would you like to lead us off in the discussion, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'll look in your package, you'll see that the pavement overlay for 38th Avenue, Wadsworth Boulevard, Sheridan Boulevard, and a number of local streets throughout the city by priority are the main portions possibly of this base bid. My question is, I just want to make sure that people are aware that 38th Avenue is going to be overlaid. It's not readily apparent. And how is it going to be restriped? We've had years and years of contention over that, and I just want to bring it out in the open.
Okay, is there any other discussion amongst council? Mr. Goff, it sounded like there was a question there. Would you like to address the question?
Sure, I'll start, and Mr. Brink is also here. He can respond if he'd like. 38th Avenue has been on the list for asphalt repair based on certain measurements and standards that the city has to measure the life of a road. We're considering this a maintenance project, so it's not addressing the streetscape project at this time. It's just a maintenance project, so it will be repaved and striped as it is today.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 2. Ms. Davis, would you introduce item number 2 for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 07-2018, Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 6320 West 44th Avenue from Neighborhood Commercial NC to Mixed-Use Neighborhood MUN, Case Number WZ-18-02 Wedgewood. And this is an ordinance for second reading and a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do you have an ordinance number for us?
This is going to be ordinance number 1640.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I would like to open the public hearing. And if you intend to speak on the public hearing, would you please stand, and I will swear you in as they tell me that's the order of business. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth as you understand it in this matter? If you do, answer "I do." Thank you. Mr. Goff, would you like to proceed with a staff presentation?
We would. Mr. Zach Wallace is here to do presentation.
Good evening, for the record. Zach Wallace Mendez, I'm a planner with the city of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. As was noted, I am presenting case number WZ-1802, Request for Approval of a Zone Change from Neighborhood Commercial to Mixed-Use Neighborhood on Property Located at 6320 West 44th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore the city council does have jurisdiction to hear the case. Subject property is shown here, outlined in red. It's located on the south side of 44th Avenue, directly across from Hopper Hollow Park. The parcel is approximately a quarter of acre in size, rectangular in shape with no irregularities as far as shape or topography. as far as shape or topography. This is the same aerial image with our zoning districts overlaid on top. The current zoning on the property is Neighborhood Commercial, and it is largely surrounded by a variety of commercial and residential properties. To the north, Hopper Hollow Park is zoned Commercial One and Residential Three. Also along Forty-Fourth Avenue to the north, there's some properties that have already been rezoned to Mixed-Use Neighborhood fairly recently, as well as some Commercial One, restricted Commercial, Neighborhood Commercial. Same goes actually along Forty-Fourth Avenue just in general. And then, once you get further off Forty-Fourth Avenue, we start getting into our residential zone districts. So R-two to the south, which allows for single-family homes and duplexes. And then to the north, some R-three, Residential Three, which allows for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily if there's adequate land size. I'd like to quickly cover the zoning. Neighborhood Commercial, let me back up, sorry. The proposed zone change would allow the property to be used residentially, commercially, or as a live-work mixed-use property. This slide shows how we treat residential uses in commercial zone districts, including the current zoning, Neighborhood Commercial. An existing residence in that zone district can remain residential or convert to a commercial use. For an existing commercial use, such as on the subject site, you cannot change or revert back to a residence because of that commercial zoning. The applicant wishes to allow residential and commercial uses on the property, or a mix of the two. Because this isn't permitted under the Neighborhood Commercial zoning, the applicant has proposed this rezoning. The MUN zone district does allow for a similar range of commercial uses as the existing Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. However, the big difference is that it also allows residential. As council is aware, we use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests. Primary among them is consistency with our comprehensive plan. This is an image from that plan, and the subject property is indicated by the arrow pointing towards Forty-Fourth Avenue. The pink line along Forty-Fourth Avenue denotes a Neighborhood Commercial corridor, and that corridor designation envisions a broad mix of activities, including commercial and residential uses. Because the MUN zone district does allow a mix of the uses, staff finds it to be an appropriate transitional zone district between Forty-Fourth Avenue Commercial Corridor and the residential uses to the south. We also find, because of the mix of uses allowed, that it is consistent with, the zone change request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There was a neighborhood meeting held, as with all zone change requests, in early January. There were six neighbors in attendance. There were some concerns raised about, I believe, parking requirements and what the buffers are if this property were to redevelop from the existing single-family properties to the east and the south. Prior to the planning commission hearing, the property was posted and published for the public hearing. We received several calls during that time period, just inquiring about what was going on, but no one had any complaints. And when we posted for this public hearing, we did not receive any calls or letters inquiring or anything like that. Since the city is not a full-service city, we send all of our land use applications out on referral to our service districts, and we received no concerns from any of our referral agencies or city departments. So staff has concluded that the request does meet the zone change criteria. The change is supported by the comprehensive plan. The MUN zoning is compatible with the surrounding area, which already includes a range, mix of uses. The MUN zoning permits for a similar range of commercial uses that are currently allowed on the site, and the zone change will not have an adverse impact on the public welfare. For these reasons, staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. Before we go to questions, we always, if the applicant is here, give the applicant a chance to address the council. Not necessary, but would make that offer if...
Certainly available to answer questions.
Thank you very much. We also, at this time, open the public hearing or continue the public hearing with public testimony. Anyone, any member of the public is invited to come forward and give their thoughts on this. If anyone would like to do so, please come forward now.
No one has signed up.
Okay, thank you. We will...
Is a motion in order? I can...
Let's see, actually, are there any questions for the applicant or for the staff from council before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Mr. Matthews?
Oops. Are we kind of, I'm trying to figure out here, just, you know, if we're intending for Forty-Fourth Avenue to be a commercial frontage, business-oriented arterial, which it tends to be now, or are we really wanting to put more residential on the street? And it's a quarter acre. I mean, I'm not sure what you would put on there, other than another bigger, single-family home, maybe. Does it really fit with our vision of what we're trying to do with Forty-Fourth Avenue? That'd be my only question.
Sure. I would say, you know, the comprehensive plan denotes this corridor as a Neighborhood Commercial corridor instead of like that dark red line, which is on Harland Street, which actually shouldn't be on Harland Street. It should be on, that's what denotes Wadsworth, is more of a major commercial corridor. The Neighborhood Commercial corridor intends for a mix of commercial and residential. So, I mean, either could take place on the property. I know it has been used for both. I don't know how viable of a residential property it is, but I know, just anecdotally from the applicant, that several people have been interested in purchasing the property to use as a live-work scenario, so kind of start their new business out of the front while they live in the back until their business is large enough to move to its own space. So that is definitely in line with the comprehensive plan, is rezoning to this mixed use that allows those types of uses.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number Oh-seven-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at sixty-three-twenty West Forty-Fourth Avenue from Neighborhood Commercial NC to Mixed-Use Neighborhood MUN, case number WZ-18-02 Wedgewood, on second reading, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication for the following reasons. City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section Twenty-Six-109 of the Code of Laws. The requested rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval, and the requested rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section Twenty-Six-112E of the Code of Laws.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a... Second by Ms. Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I still have some questions for staff on this and like to address them. Now, if it goes commercial, it's a quarter acre, that's smaller than my house lot. What can you put on there and still allow for parking and whatever?
Mr. Matthews? I'm going to let you go ahead on this, but the reason that we ask for additional questions of staff before we ask for the motion, so that they could come and do this, so...
I'm sorry, I fail to see the difference.
The difference is really now we're discussion amongst council.
Okay, well, my discussion then to council is, you know, if we're going to go commercial, let's go commercial. If we're going to make Forty-Eighth residential, let's make it all residential. I'm concerned that we're getting a patchwork of different zonings, designations within the street, and that we have no real cohesive plan that's taking place on Forty-Fourth. You go west to the other side of Wadsworth, and people want it to be more residential. You go east, I thought this was kind of our commercial area. So why we need to accommodate more residential on Forty-Fourth, I'm not certain.
Additional discussion or comments from staff? Ms. Davis?
So I guess my thoughts are, and it's in my district, is that I guess I would not view this area as just commercial, because if you go a little bit further down, there are some homes, and then I think there's a hair place here, you know? So I think there's some commercial, and there are some homes. And I guess my thought is, is when I've heard discussions of Forty-Fourth Avenue and commercial areas, I hear that discussion more by Field Park and on the other side of Wadsworth, you know, between kind of where Swiss Flower Shop is and Pietra's and some of that, that I've heard that we'd like to see more commercial. But I guess I've not heard, and I might be wrong, that we've focused this area to be just commercial. And I can think of several homes in this area that are homes, and some homes that are, an accountant, like for instance, my accountant's on Forty-Fourth. So I could see that a home could be a business or a home.
Ms. Dozeman?
So I would say that this is reticent of the times that we are approaching. I've seen a lot of turnover in the businesses in this area, and I would consider it both a residential and commercial area, given that we just built a neighborhood park there recently. We do have a lot of, and it's a walk-to park, that's why they don't have a lot of parking. So it's one that people traditionally walk to in the area. There's a lot of apartments around here, and I would say that this property is the perfect opportunity for a live-work space, and I think it would be a good change for the neighborhood.
Additional discussion amongst council? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries six to one, with Council Member Matthews voting no.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item Number Three. Mr. Ann, would you introduce Item Number Three?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Council Bill Number Zero-eight-oh-two-zero-one-eight, an ordinance amending Article Seven Sign Code of Chapter Twenty-Sixth of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, case number Z-0A-18-01. Would you like me to read the issue?
If you would give us a little brief outline on the issue, this is an ordinance for first reading, but we should make everyone aware of what it is.
Sure. In June of 2015, the United States Supreme Court decided the case of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. This decision, which held the Town of Gilbert's sign code unconstitutional, has a significant impact on local government sign codes throughout the nation. In brief, signs cannot be regulated by their content, so sign codes must be modified to regulate signage utilizing time, place, and manner standards. This has prompted city nationwide, including the City of Wheat Ridge, to evaluate their sign codes and make amendments to ensure they are constitutional.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading, so a motion would be in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number Zero-eight-2018, an ordinance amending Article Seven Sign Code of Chapter Twenty-Sixth of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, case number Z-0A-18-01 on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, April twenty-third, 2018, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to Item Number Four. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce Item Number Four?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Resolution Number Twenty-one-2018, a resolution adopting a cultural vision for the City of
Would you read the ad issue on this?
Yes, sir. The Cultural Commission recognizes the important role that cultural arts play in the economic and aesthetic development of the city, and identified that a cultural vision is necessary to provide consistent, cogent talking points for all stakeholders involved in various projects in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
We do. Joyce Manwaring, our Parks and Recreation Director, will give an update.
I'd like to thank the Cultural Commission for all their work in completing the cultural vision, for their vision in suggesting that we have one. So I'd like to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one speaker signed up to speak, Ms. Diane Robb. Would you please come forward and introduce yourself and...
Hi, I'm Diane Robb, seven-zero-zero-three, West Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity of sharing with you this evening. I am Diane Robb, Chair of the Cultural Commission, and we have a number of cultural commissioners present as well. We have Carol Matthews, Jareth Gronski, David Op, Gay Porter Denilian present from the Cultural Commission. It has been the goal of the Cultural Commission to create a cultural vision for this beautiful city we live in, and we have worked hard and diligently on this task this past year. It is our privilege to present this cultural vision to the council this evening. The Cultural Commission provides consistent, cogent talking points for our group and other stakeholders, including elected officials, city management. When talking with Wheat Ridge residents and potential residents, developers, visitors, and businesses about the cultural offerings and outlook in our city. The cultural vision in no way states specific types of theme, or themes of artwork to be incorporated into our city. Wheat Ridge is a very diverse city, and the cultural vision embraces this. This is our roadmap to create as much cultural influence as possible in our parks and city throughout. This includes all forms of art and culture, including music, dance, theater, history, and other avenues of creative expression. To provide a little history, the envisioned Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan states a specific goal of promoting and supporting the arts to improve and enhance the quality of life for area residents, employees, and visitors. We are fortunate to already have a public art management plan that outlines the process of incorporating public art into our community. This plan is based on the belief that public art enhances and defines a city's image. Art makes public spaces more welcoming, and it creates a deeper interaction with the environment, the places where individuals work, live, shop, and seek recreation. The cultural vision includes more than just the placement of public art. We believe that art and culture should be common threads that run throughout our community, and it is a vital part, and it needs to be a vital part of every conversation regarding this community. I want to mention that a while back, I received a couple of communications from developers asking for a cultural vision direction for Wheat Ridge. I had no answer at the time. These developers were interested in working with the city, believe in public art, and incorporating artistic elements into their developments, and were looking for direction. I want to mention also that in no way were they asking for any public monies, just art direction. Today, we have that direction with our cultural vision that we can now share. We hope the city council is pleased with all the work that the Cultural Commission has done, and we are now ready to utilize this tool to go to work in making arts and culture truly a shining point of Wheat Ridge.
Thank you, Ms. Robb. That was the only individual I had signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone here in the chamber that would like to speak on this? I'll close the public testimony portion of this, and a motion would be in order.
Sorry. I move to approve Resolution Twenty-one-2018, a resolution adopting a cultural vision for the City of Wheat Ridge.
Second.
I believe Ms. Davis got to the wire first.
Cut in by a hair.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Dozeman, a second by Ms. Davis for Agenda Item Number Four. Is there discussion on the motion?
Well, I just would like to thank the Commission for the work they've done. I know this has been a long, hard slog for you guys, and I really think that this is the foundation of us moving forward. So I want to congratulate you and thank you as a citizen of Wheat Ridge, because this provides the foundation upon which we can build.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, would you introduce item number five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 22-2018, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $213,310 and awarding a contract to CZBLLC for a neighborhood revitalization strategy update. At issue, City Council has identified an update to the 2005 Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, NRS, as a major priority in the current strategic plan. The 2005 NRS represented a community conversation and consensus about the city's competitiveness and what to do about it. Staff has negotiated a scope of work with the CZBLLC for a process that will include an extensive public outreach effort to determine how does the city make the most of the assets it has resurrected, nurtured, invested, and grown, and must now optimize, and to answer the question, what does the city want to be in the coming decades? Total budget for the scope of work, which also includes a comprehensive assessment of the city's retail market, is $213,310. A supplemental budget appropriation is required to enter into this contract.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
I don't. I think the issue covered it pretty well. Answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Pond, would you provide a motion on number five?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 22-2018, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $213,310, and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with the CZBLLC for a neighborhood revitalization strategy update.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pond, a second by Ms. Duran. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
That concludes our business agenda for tonight. We will move to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update for City Council. The mayor and I will be meeting with Denver Transit Partners on Wednesday to get an update from them on the status of the Gold Line. As you know, the Colorado PUC had given, has given verbal decision direction to, for a path forward, for certifying both the A-line and the G-line. However, it was just a verbal decision. We still have to wait for an actual written decision from the PUC before the project can move forward. The project has completed the last set of the wireless crossing testing for the Gold Line, and they are currently compiling the results, which will be sent to the Federal Railroad Administration for them to review. We're hoping that those results were compiled by the end of last week or the beginning of this week. I haven't, I haven't heard yet if those have been finalized. After the, if the Federal Railroad Administration reviews those results, the project expects to get approval to run multiple test trains. They are testing the train right now, but there's only a few a day. They're gonna ramp it up to a point where the trains are gonna be running based on what the schedule will be when they're actually receiving revenue and, and taking passengers. So that is, hopefully, we might have more details we'll get from Denver Transit Partners, who's actually building the line on Wednesday, and we'll report back to you when we get that, that information. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Goff? Actually, Mr. Dahl.
He's Mr. Goff. Just a...
Let's not point fingers.
Thank you. Just one quick report, the, the City Treasurer asked me to, to report to you regarding the business license for the stigma fitness, the fitness location plus marijuana, and that business license has been revoked. That revocation, of course, is subject to appeal rights. It's important that those be granted and guaranteed, and that appeal period is running, which is why I'm making this report, not the City Treasurer, because the treasurer would be the, the hearing officer in any such appeal. But I did want, because I know it's important to council, it's come up, to let you know where in the process that is, and where it is in the process now is business license revoked, appeal period yet to run. So as there's more information, there isn't any more than that now, but if, as there is more information, I'll be pleased to pass it on to you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Matthews?
If I may, I would just like to thank staff for acting on this quickly and decisively, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Well done. Mr. DeTulio?
Mayor?
Oh.
I had a question. Did you say an appeal has been filed?
No, the appeal period's running right now, so we don't have an appeal yet, no.
Mr. DeTulio?
Thank you. On your dais, I passed out the C-Safe statements, which is through March of this year. I just wanted to quickly go over some numbers for you. That first page, if you look at the top right-hand corner, it says C-Safe account 01 at the very end. That is basically our general fund, operating fund. This is liquid funds. Right now, we have a little over $10 million that's been moved to that account. When I first started as treasurer, there was 85 cents in that account, because most of the money was moved into CDs everywhere across the country, and the CDs are not legal because they have to be PDPA insured, not FDIC insured. So we've moved almost, well, over $10 million into this fund. This is a liquid fund. As you can see, the year-to-date interest is $27,213 for three months. If you look at the 2018 budget, which council approved in November, the whole year, the budgeted amount was $51,000. So we're over halfway there in three months. So we're earning a lot more interest. This money is liquid in case we had to use it for any expenses, and we're earning at, right now, the monthly average is 1.65, and it's going up every time the month comes in, so it's actually very good. The second page is, on the backside, is our 2E bond, and you can see with that that that's an O2 account. This money is obviously dedicated to 2E projects, and the year-to-date, we've earned a little over $112,000 in three months. So projections is around $500,000, $400,000 by the year-end, as if the interest rate stays the same. This money, the interest on this account has to be spent on 2E projects. It can't be used on any other projects in the city. And then the last one, it's Conservation Trust Fund. I just moved this funds over this month, or in March, because what happened was, is this was sitting at our bank, and it had earned $1,100 last year in interest total, and so far, we've earned about $239, but that's only for half a month. And the projections are, if we keep going with this, we'll earn a little over $10,000 in interest by the end of the year versus $1,100, and this is Conservation Trust money. It's not shown in the total funds report, because this is actually for the Parks and Rec. And so I just wanted to kind of give council a heads-up on those three accounts. So these three are earning a lot more interest now. We've moved quite a bit of money over to C-Safe over the last, since January and since December. And so that report for total funds has been posted for March on the website, and then today, I just posted the January 2018 financial reporting for the city, so, and the 2E. So those will be on the website, hopefully, by tomorrow. Sarah Spalding will post them, so we're getting caught up. Do you have any questions on those funds or the earnings? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DeTulio. Ms. Shaver?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
We'll start with council. Mr. Matthews?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Duran?
Thank you. I just wanted to send my condolences out to Joe Hugley and his family. We lost a very important member of our community. She served on Wheat Ridge Planning Commission, Donna Kimskey. She was a great friend, a great community activist, and I will miss her. Thank you.
Thank you for that memory, memory. Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let the community know that on April 26th, the Jeffco Schools Foundation will be hosting the Elevate Education Gala. Tickets are available at jeffco.gesture.com. The event is going to be at the Arvada Center for Arts and Humanities to raise funds needed to grow several foundations, supported district-wide programs, including the Jeffco Summer of Early Learning, which provides a half-day school environment for students throughout the summer, so that we prevent that summer slide and to help struggling learners. So I would like to just kind of get that out there and have the community support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first start by thanking the Jefferson Center for Mental Health and everything they've done for our community and will continue to do, and the great lengths they went to to bridge the gap when the Rockefeller House closed, so I really appreciate that. And also wanted to thank the City Treasurer for his update. I thought that was really valuable information. And then this week is National Work Zone Awareness Week, so as you're driving through work zones and whatnot, please be mindful of the workers in the work zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
I will just belated thank you to the Cultural Commission. Everyone has left the room, but I wanted to thank them for that hard work. Also, just a recognition of staff also, and, and really, I think councils before us who have committed to Tree City and, and really being a leader in that space, so it's great to see, see us get that award again and again. It'll look forward to forty years.
Thank you. Well, I would like to once again congratulate the Cultural Commission on a job well done. Jefferson Center for Mental Health, sixty years being here and helping our community and taking over needed public mental health services over on Wadsworth Boulevard, very, very good organization, glad to have them here. With that, everyone have a pleasant evening. We'll see you back here again. Meeting is earned.